Good, okay. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, August ninth, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we'll call the order and have the clerk read out the closed session agenda.
Closed session agenda for today, August eighth or ninth. Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D1 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Barr versus County of Calaveras, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number Item two, public employment pursuant to government code 54957B1 Title Interim County Administrative Officer. Item three pursuant to government code 54957.6 Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Marcos Munoz Regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021, Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union Unrepresented Employees. And there's no online public comment?
Okay, and there's no public comment in the room. We'll move on to report out for July 26th.
Report out of closed session from July 26th. Item one pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 Conference with Legal Counsel Re-Anticipated Litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation, board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, public employment pursuant to government code 54957B1 Title Interim County Administrative Officer, board action, no reportable action taken.
With that, we will go into closed session and convene to the regular meeting at nine o'clock. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, August ninth, 2022. At this time, could you please stand for the flag?
I do leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this morning, we went into closed session. At this time, there is no reportable action. We will be going back into closed session after the regular agenda. At this time, we will have staff announcement, and I believe we have Ms. Medina.
Good morning, Madam Chair, respective board members. Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. It is kitten Palooza at our animal shelter. We have over 20 kittens available down for adoption. We would like to thank Focus, our volunteers, and Sarah Lansford with Public Access TV, who has put together adorable pictures and videos to share on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and our board meeting PowerPoints. Our animal service team will be working with Sarah and her crew to film and feature live videos of our pets of the week. Our community can also view the broadcasting on Xfinity, Comcast, Channel seven and nine in Calaveras and Amador, Volcano Channels twenty-one and twenty-two, and Car-Tel Channels seven and nine. Subscribe to the Calaveras County Public Access TV through Calaveras Community TV YouTube channel, the Calaveras Community TV podcast station, and the Calaveras Community TV Facebook page to see more of our adoptable animals. Thanks again, animal service volunteers, Sarah, and Public Access TV for helping us get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other staff announcements?
There are no other staff announcements?
Okay, and she and none in the room. We'll move on to the next, on the agenda, which is recognition and acknowledgements. We have three proclamations this morning. What were these? So the first two, which is four and five, I am going to read off and combine the both as they are both Civic Sparks Fellows. So is Romi and Jaclyn here? There you are, okay. So I'm gonna read it for the both of you. This is proclamation recognizing Jaclyn Taylor and Romi Holmes for one year of service as Civic Sparks Fellow working on housing solution for Calaveras County. Whereas Calaveras County is committed to addressing the housing needs of its residents, and whereas Calaveras County partnered with Civic Well through the Office of Planning and Research and California Volunteers in order to host Civic Spark Fellows, and whereas Civic Spark Fellows served through an AmeriCorps Initiative Program to address housing and environmental issues in order to build the capacity of local governments in California to meet the needs of housing and address environmental issues. Jaclyn Taylor and Romi Holmes completed one year of service as Civic Spark Fellows to the benefit of Calaveras County residents. Whereas Ms. Taylor and Ms. Holmes during their year of service have conducted housing project research, assessed local housing needs, developed housing information for the county leadership and community at large. Their research has resulted in local home accessibility modification program, whereas their research has resulted in forwarding and accessory development workbook specific to our local residents, and whereas their service resulted in an annual report on the county's housing element with a presentation material to assist the local community in understanding the housing element. And whereas they assisted in the launch of the Calaveras County Housing Resource Partnership, a partnership to bring government, public, and private entities together to work on housing solutions, and whereas they have provided exceptional dedication to Calaveras County and its residents with passion, innovation, and quality in all their work. And whereas Ms. Taylor and Ms. Holmes' service has been exemplary and therefore worthy of respectable recognition. Now therefore be proclaimed, at this time, is no public comment. Corey.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. Today with me, we have both Romi and Jaclyn and their manager, Lee Kimball. We're here to honor a year of service through the Civic Sparks Fellows Program, which is a governor's initiative through the AmeriCorps Program. And what it does is it builds capacity for local governments to address emerging environmental and social equity needs as well as water resource management, affordable housing, and mobility. The Civic Spark Program is administered by Civic Well, and the fellows in the program commit to one year of service to a community to address these challenges. They worked tirelessly this year and are provided a very small stipend in which to live on while they learn and provide their service. So as you've heard, our fellows are Jaclyn Taylor and Romi Holmes, both of them entirely passionate. They brought their own unique yet exemplary skills to allow our housing system to grow and thrive. Jaclyn is a graduate of the Cal Poly Program out of Humboldt with a bachelor's in environmental science and a concentration in policy and planning. She does have professional goals to develop a far-reaching policy or programs that impacts communities and its environment in a positive way. After graduating, Jaclyn joins Civic Sparks in hopes of gaining professional experience towards her ultimate professional goal to give back to her community. She comes with just the right mix of expertise and the humility needed to learn along the way. She brings confidence to voice concerns and allows for improvements in our programming. She believes in teamwork and brings people together. Romi is a graduate of University of California, Santa Barbara. She's a bachelor's in environmental studies and her professional goal is to advocate for sustainability and environmental justice. She too joined Civic Sparks after graduating in order to gain the necessary experience to make an impact in critical issues such as housing at the local level. After a year with Romi on the team, we can validate she is an outstanding advocate. In fact, when it comes to understanding the importance of communication, this is where Romi shines. Her creativity elevated projects and resulted in pathways for housing stakeholders to gain better understanding of the very complex housing element. So with that, on behalf of your Board and of Lee Kimball, we acknowledge this outstanding effort by both Civic Sparks.
Thank you, Corey. Is there any comment from the Board? Is there any other public comment? Okay.
I would move this item, Madam Chair. I'd be proud to.
I'd like to second it.
Okay, and the motion is gonna be a proven vote proclamation?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and there is a motion, there is a step there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, the County of Calaveras, this ninth day of August, 2022, does hereby honor and recognize Jaclyn Taylor and Romi Holmes for their year of service and expressed appreciation to both of them for their dedication, innovation, and service to the County of Calaveras and its residents. Thank you, congratulations.
We want to get your pictures.
How, is this the first year we've been part of this program, had this program?
In my tenure here over the last year and some months, it is my first experience working with Civic Sparks. I know that in the County of Calaveras, we have had AmeriCorps, and I would appreciate seeing this type of commendation when we've got very worthy members.
Oh, no, it's quite exciting. Thank you. Thank you.
Now we have item number six, which is the third proclamation, and I will turn it over to Gary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stacy, would you like to read the item for us?
Item six, proclamation, clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation declaring August 27th as Harold and Caroline Dahl Day in the Wallace-Bursen area of Calaveras County.
Thank you. And I gotta tell you, this is a long time coming. I've known Harold and Caroline for many, many years. They have done so much work in Wallace down there, so many different things, community-wise. I'm so proud to read this, and I will, we will approve this hopefully today by the Board, and then I will be presenting it to them on August 27th at the Harold and Caroline Dahl Day in Wallace. So let me read it. Whereas Caroline Dahl's parents, Dominico and Cecindrina Belaya, am I close, dere close? Okay, you stop me if I'm not, let me know, okay?
No problem.
All right. First resided in the Wallace area in the 1930s, following other members of the Belaya family who initially resided in the Wallace area since 1906. And whereas Caroline Dahl's father worked for decades at the Rocabella Olive Plant in Wallace and helped to promote the economic development of the Wallace-Bursen area by assisting farmers in the cultivation of their land and harvesting of their crops using his labor, tractor, and other machinery. And whereas a street in Wallace bears the name Belaya Road in honor of Caroline Dahl's parents. And whereas Caroline Dahl attended and graduated from the Wallace one-room schoolhouse in 1954 and graduated from Calaveras High School in 1958. And whereas Harold Dahl first met Caroline in 1958 in Bursen, and they were named in Stockton in April 16, 1961, and have resided in, excuse me, they were married in Stockton in April 16, 1961, and have resided in the Wallace area since. And whereas Harold Dahl then enlisted in the U.S. Navy, and after fulfilling his military service, he returned to the Wallace to be with Caroline and become gainfully employed. And whereas Caroline Dahl worked for the U.S. Postal Service for 40 years from 1966 to 2006 in Calaveras County post offices, including the one located in Wallace and Bursen. Whereas Caroline Dahl was one of the founders of the Wallace Business Association in 1966, which later became the Wallace-Bursen Association, a nonprofit community service organization. And whereas Harold Dahl was named Governor of the Wallace Moose Lodge, and Harold and Caroline Dahl have been members of the Moose International for nearly 50 years. And whereas Caroline Dahl chaired in 1976 and again in 2009 the joint reunion of the pupils who attended the one-room schoolhouse in Wallace and Bursen respectively, with the 2009 reunion being televised by the Calaveras County Public Access Television. And whereas Harold and Caroline Dahl's daughters, Ramona and Victoria, were active in 4H, and Caroline Dahl was an active 4H member for more than 35 years. And whereas Harold and Caroline Dahl are classic car owners and have been members of the Foothill Classic Car Club and the American Steel Classic Car Club, winning more than 200 awards in competition. And whereas for decades, Harold and Caroline Dahl actively participated in the Wallace-Bursen Association community service activity such as highway cleanup along State Highway 12 and Wallace-Bursen, Easter and Halloween activities for their children, Santa's Smiles, which provides clothing and toys for local youth, and the Field of Flags annually held in the Wallace honoring past and present members of the U.S. Military, first responders and others during America's Independence Week celebration, resulting in the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors naming Caroline and Harold Dahl Senior Couple of the Year in 2010. And whereas in recognition of more than 50 years of community service, Harold and Caroline Dahl have provided to the Wallace-Bursen area of Calaveras County, the Wallace-Bursen Association awarded to the couple its first lifetime achievement award in 2022. And whereas Harold and Caroline Dahl are the embodiment of the best Calaveras County exemplifies in its history, economic development, and community service. And with that, I will stop and ask for any public comments. Pless, you have any comments?
I think you asked the.
Stand up to the microphone, please.
I've known them for decades. I'm a little bit emotional right now because I didn't expect to be speaking. I am here on behalf of not only the Wallace-Bursen Association, but for the Valley Springs News and also for the pine tree.net. They are real, honest-to-goodness, down-to-earth people. They are honest, they are kind, they are giving. They are what we would expect, at least in my mind, what everyone would be like within this county. One of the things, I don't know if it was mentioned on that list, was that the Board of Supervisors honored them with the Senior Citizens Award, and I can't remember the year.
2010.
But, okay, thank you. So that meant a lot to them. And that's all I could say is that they are loved by their community. This has never, there's never been an award like this that was ever given to anybody in that area, and it's any pity deserves it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board, and I will, I will make the motion to move this item.
A second?
A second. You have a motion and a second? Call, two seconds. Call for a vote, all in favor? Aye. Pose. Passes five zero. I would like to have, since they're not here, and it's gonna be presented to them on the 27th, can we get all five supervisors down here and get a picture?
I think we have a lineup that was positioned as. I want to have Jack on the left, and I'm gonna have the two ladies. Okay, I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna have you on the left. I'm on the right, and you're on the side.
You're on the right?
You're gonna be on the right. Jack, you're over here. I would like you all to be together, and I would like you to hold.
Can I put those right down?
Oh, well, it has to be. Now, I'm gonna take a couple shots here, and thank you for doing this. And this is just a personal note, maybe I shouldn't say, but we will. And take a couple more, because one of you will have your eyes closed. That's the reason why. I'll take one more. Thank you.
Thank you. We want to know which one has her eyes closed.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's a pleasure to speak with you today.
Pless, you want, you want this and bring it on the 27th, or do you want me to keep it?
You keep it. I don't want it down. Oh, you know what I want to do? I know it'll be on there. Just hold it around and get a picture of it.
And next we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the general public comment. This is any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. Caliphate law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter that is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is concluded before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not concluded during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comment to be heard. So at this time, is there any public comment for anything not on the agenda today? And I'll start with you.
There are no online public comment requests?
Okay, thank you, and I will move to the room. Is there any public comment for any item not on the agenda? Okay, be mindful, there is three minutes, and the lights will signal such as.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Kathy Muccio from McCallum Hill, California. I have a compilation of research and comments and concerns from a number of voting Calaveras residents. In 2005, 934 cats and 187 dogs were euthanized at the shelter, mostly due to time and space. These are the bad old days. However, things have dramatically improved over time. In 2021, 14 cats and 20 dogs were euthanized. All cats that were euthanized were due to disease or injury. All dogs were euthanized due to disease, injury, or behavioral history. No healthy, adoptable animal in the past several years has been euthanized for time and space. Those statistics have earned the shelter no-kill status and are cause for celebration. Due to enlightened shelter practices regarding intakes and euthanasia and low adoption rates, animals in Calaveras County have a longer length of stay than many other counties and organizations for a variety of reasons. Among those reasons for low adoption rates are the persistently negative view of the shelter by some members of our community due to past practices, the physical condition of the facility, and the lack of veterinary services. It's not unusual for an adopted cat or dog to wait two to three weeks for a spay or neuter appointment before it can go home. Often, potential adopters who are eager for a new family member will go to another shelter where dogs and cats are already altered and can leave the shelter right away. One thing is clear, Calaveras County needs a new shelter that meets currently accepted standards for the safe and humane treatment of animals and meets the unique needs of our community that may differ from other county or municipal shelters or organizations. You previously heard about the deplorable conditions of the kennels that house the dogs, the unsanitary drainage when cleaning kennels, the kennels that allow dogs to injure themselves or one another, and the intolerable noise level for dogs, staff, and visitors. In 2021, 295 cats and kittens were impounded. Considering that only 12 cats were euthanized due to injury or illness, the shelter does a remarkable job in adopting cats into loving homes or transferring them to other shelters that have high adoption rates and the space for them. Most of our cats are longer-term residents. All healthy, adoptable shelter kitties are eventually adopted, but sometimes not right away. And now I will save my time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lori Morris. I live in San Andreas, and I'm following up on Kathy's. This is a statement from the Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelters by the Association of Veterinary Shelter Veterinarians, excuse me. Quote, cages are intended for short-term temporary confinement designed to restrict mobility during a defined period for recovery or treatment, including small stainless steel cages, are unacceptable as primary enclosures, and are cruel if used as such. As the length of stay increases beyond one or two weeks, it becomes aggressively, progressively more important to provide space that is both mentally and physically stimulating. Alternatives to traditional housing must be provided. For animals housed long-term, the physical environment must include opportunities for hiding, playing, resting, feeding, and eliminating. For cats, the environment should also allow for scratching, climbing, and perching. Protected indoor-outdoor access is ideal for most spaces, especially when animals are held long-term. Outdoor spaces must be suitably enclosed to protect from adverse weather, vandalism, and prevent escape or predation, unquote. The shelter does not provide enough humane communal spaces for long-term adult cat residents and growing kittens. Cats and kittens confined to cages for prolonged periods, they become stressed and are more susceptible to stress-induced diseases such as upper respiratory infections and ringworm. Adult cats are prone to developing cage rage or other behavior problems which makes them more challenging to adopt. Kittens kept in cages do not develop physically or emotionally as they would if they were in a more suitable environment. We do our best with little communal space to, we have to make them homey and stimulating as possible, but none of our communal rooms have windows or indoor-outdoor space. This is a critical need in the design of a new shelter. We still need cages for very young kittens, cats who do not like other cats, the sick and the injured, but they are a small percentage of the total cat and kitten population. Several things are clear. A building cannot simply be retrofitted and made into a shelter by adding kennels for dogs and cages for cats. There are very clear standards for shelter design that must be adhered to. However, shelter designs are not cookie cutter. A design that works in one community may not meet the standards for another. An architect or consultant with a clear understanding of shelter standards along with shelter staff and community members who are familiar with the needs of our community must be involved in the design of a new shelter for Calaveras County. Thank you. I'm gonna leave these here.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Saul. I just wanted to mention what made me want to volunteer at animal services. I live in Arnold, and there was a kitty who seemed to be in. I live in Arnold and there was a kitty who seemed to be in heat, who had been at the Arnold post office for about three days. And she was so friendly, everyone was just petting her. And when I looked at her more closely, I saw that she had an eye infection. Half of the eye was bulging out and the other half was recessed in. And I thought, how is it that people have seen her for three days and they've done nothing? I ran home, got a cat carrier. I called the Humane Society in Angels Camp, but they were closed. So I called Animal Services and they were open. They said, you better hurry up, we're going to have lunch soon. So she walked right into Cat Carrier because she was so friendly. I took her there, found out, you know, that they were pretty desperate for volunteers. And I waited to see what happened to her and her eye was fixed, she was spayed, and she became this ambassador at the front office. You know, she would greet people. I mean, she was such a wonderful cat that she was adopted and she was in the Calaveras Enterprise, you know, Cat of the Week. And that made me feel so happy. So I was volunteering, but as a volunteer, there are much less happy things going on there. I see animals that, we don't have a spay and neuter program. Females, once they become pregnant, are dumped. And these are just wonderful cats, friendly, loving, and they'll have nine kittens. They come in, they just fill the shelter. Our shelter is just full of kittens. And those kittens are just pacing back and forth with nothing, you know? It's just so disheartening to see what goes on. And I'm going to continue advocating, even though it's so hard to see this. And I know that the improvements for Calaveras Animal Services has mainly come from grassroots efforts, focus, Calaveras, Humane Society, and they really need to get, we need to hear a day about a foster program when we can begin that, because right now, right now, we need to have that help. And, well, I'm just going to continue. I just want what's best. A shelter that has ventilation, that's really up to date and specifically designed for a shelter, there are certain basics, definitely, we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay. And seeing none, and just to confirm, there is no other on the Zoom?
Correct. No online public comments?
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. So at this time, I will turn it over to the room. Are there any public comments on consent from Zoom?
There are no online public comments.
I'll move it to the room. Is there any public comment on consent agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any public comment on consent. I will bring it back to the board for, is there any board member that wishes to comment? Seeing none? Okay.
Is our case on the consent?
Sorry, can you come up to the?
Is our case on the consent agenda, CE 21 0063?
Yes.
Yes, because there's no other regular agenda. So everything's on consent.
Is this our only?
Yeah, so there's your opportunity to pull the item from the consent if you so wish.
To pull it?
Yes, you would have to pull it.
Correct.
And then it'll pull and then we'll go through the consent. And then, once we approve the majority of the items that are not pulled, then those that wish to comment on the items they have pulled will then have an opportunity to comment.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you've already made up your mind, like, there's no vote, it's non-controversial, this will just go down as recommended.
No, this is, this is your opportunity to remove, ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and then it would be, then you would have an opportunity to comment on it and have it be discussed.
But what, when would that be?
Today.
Okay, remove it from the consent.
Yeah, we'd like to discuss it, definitely.
Okay, so that would be item number 26 is pulled from the, from the public. Okay, is there any other item on the consent that anyone wishes to pull? She and none, we have one item, item number 26, which is pulled. All others are not, is there a board member? Yes.
I'd like to move the remainder, Madam Chair.
If there's a motion on the table, is there?
I'll second.
Second. All right, there is a second, all in favor? Aye. So at this time, we have item number 26 from consent pulled by the public. And at this time, public comment, you can come up for public comment. Yeah, Stacy, can you read it out, please?
Item 26, action item code compliance, adopt the recommendation of administrative hearing board denying the appeal of the administrative citation issued to Stephen Corvelli and Alana Fitzgerald in the code compliance case number CE 21-0063 regarding the property located at 129 Sarajevo, San Andreas, APN 042028029.
In the public comment period, be mindful of the light. That will be the time that the code will light that on, turn that on. So whenever you're ready, you can start.
Yeah, we believe that the HB's ruling was, was not accurate and correct. It was well-established at the hearing that the water line that we were cited for supposedly relocating, first of all, it was not relocated. We fixed it in situ where it was. We were denied a permit the day that Reba Davis came out to look at what we had done. We went in to immediately get a permit to repair it. We were denied that by County Council Sarah Edwards. We had a meeting with Doug Oliver at that time. We said, you know, you people had already come out and looked at it and it's illegal. It was established at the hearing that the water line was illegal and it would be even after we repaired it. So we don't understand why there's a double standard here for code enforcement. Mr. Toffenelli visited our property on January 26th and he acknowledged that there are several code violations from the property next door. In fact, that's what got all of this started, is that we filed code complaints about the sewer, the water, and the electric meter, and nobody did anything about it. So we had an attorney contact Mr. Toffenelli. As our supervisor, we contacted Mr. Toffenelli and he said over the phone, yeah, by what you're telling me, I know these are illegal and they're non-code compliant, but the bottom line is that, that we're not being treated equally under the law. And County Council, in the hearing, they violated the law. They argued points contrary to existing law. The water line is above ground and it had been for 12 years prior to us buying our property. That was ignored. The line was hit accidentally because it's not compliant, it's not found in the public record, it's illegally located on our property without a grant DDoE Smith. All of the requirements that, that we're going through right now to get a legal water line have been ignored for this property. And we went through code enforcement, we've gone through the channels, and all of that has been ignored. And we don't understand why this is up for any further discussion. We fixed the line in good faith and it's still illegal, everyone knows about it, and nobody is citing the Applings for the multiple violations. There's still a travel trailer on the property that's in violation of code. No one's done anything about it. The electric meter, we're going through a problem with PG&E right now. We can't build on our property, we can't do anything because the county will not apply the law equally. They came after us and my understanding from Doug Oliver is a reason why the lawyers are involved is because they claim we escalated things by doing, the only option left was because the county has not, not provided public health and safety for us.
The red light. Okay. Thank you.
We don't understand why we're being specially assessed, anything. It has been repaired. And that's what we got, a letter that says we are being, you are voting to specially assess against our parcel. And we have Doug Oliver here. It was shown that we repaired it and repaired it, it's issued. The only reason a line had been diverted is we were getting our own line and we provided evidence at the hearing that we had contacted the building department and we put in an irrigation line. We used that water as the most expedient way to put them up. This house is a mobile home. There's never a building permit. They bought it when it was for a hundred grand because it had been red-tagged according to whole neighborhood. It's on Poston Pier, there's no architectural permits for this, it's surrounded by trash, there's an Oregon plate, 2012 travel trailer, which whole, underneath is a SAS soil absorption, pit, sewer of some kind. They're not tied onto the sewer in any way. We've exhaustively tried to find anywhere, because my whole backyard is flooded with sewage. We showed Mr. Toffenelli, he seemed concerned enough to hustle out with his suede cowboy boots, but we haven't heard anything since. And we can give you copies of the letters we wrote to Mr. Toffenelli outlining the law. They have utilities, they just scabbed in from the neighbors that were applied by 129, the previous owner, applied for, it's on the listing, he would testify to that, that he applied for, they said that these people just stole in his absence. And the county's doing nothing. And I know Mr. Oliver, because essentially he told us his hands are tied because County Council, once our attorney called, I guess they want to run up our attorney bill, but we fixed it, it's done, any other money, it's, and we've sent documents and documents and documents, Ms. Fuldor, please look at this. You know, the municipal codes here matter. The California building codes matter. The Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution matter. These things matter. They're the law and enforceable. Thank you. And I expect them to be enforced by any decent American.
Are there any other public comment?
I resent the accusations against us. It's not your business, I guess, it's our neighborly duty to get along. We bought that property, it was owned by one person, both properties. They abandoned the property, it was a foreclosure. Most people take opportunities to, you know, financially buy foreclosures for the benefit of you. We did. It's a modular home, it has everything, I mean, we bought it thinking, you know, everything was fine, until the water meter went crazy one day and the water company called us and we discovered that the water was on this other property. With that, we made sure that it wasn't turned on, it was just a regular tap. So we planned to buy that property so we didn't have a problem that is going on right now. COVID came, we were stopped, we weren't able to complete the process. And then these people came. I don't know what they bought it for, but I guess it was a great opportunity for them. We tried to tell them about that. Yes, there is a trailer there, it's, my daughter was abandoned by her husband in, seven years ago, he's still missing. So she lives with us, it's a trailer with her things in it. It has no plumbing and people have been out there. I don't know what Mr. Toffenelli was sinking in, but there's no sewage, there wasn't a homeless man that we let sleep in there during the winter because he was sleeping under the stairs at the church. You know, everything that's being said about us is, is, you know, just crazy. We're upstanding citizens. I work for the, the school district, we've been here for years. You know, some people know us, some people don't here. I don't know what else to do. We're, my husband's disabled, he has an accident that happened in 2000, he can't work the way he used to. I'm working three jobs to try to make it and we're getting more expense by these people because we were living happily. Our water, our power, everything is on that property. Now they want to move it and we're having to have the expense of it. Their water line that they did, they don't communicate with us because they don't want to talk to us. You know, I'm not sure why, I think the previous, I don't know when my three minutes are up, but, you know, the previous neighbor, the neighbor that lives next to them walked into our house at one time, so he's got nothing but bad to say about us because we have evidence that he did that. But anyway, we're just trying to survive with, and we're trying to be neighborly. These guys won't even say a word to me, so thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comment? Once everyone goes up, that's the, otherwise we're going to have to allow everybody else to come out. So it's limited to three minutes a person.
Chair Fuldor, there is no online public comment?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So. At this time, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Is there any board comment at this time?
I'd like, I'd like to hear Mr. Oliver's input because there seems to be several issues.
Mr. Oliver?
Doug Oliver, chief building official, what specific items would you like addressed?
There seems to be the issue of the water line and just general code enforcement issues which are not part of this, is my understanding.
Essentially, there's a lot of civil matters between the two property owners primarily because the properties changed hands and when they did, two different owners ended up with parcels where there were utilities that are extending from one parcel into the other. There's, there's a sentiment that they were installed illegally or unsafely. We've done inspections, we know that they are placed, we don't know when they were placed, but they are operating in compliance with code at the time, presumably at the time they were installed. I know that there are some soil conditions and other things that have changed, but there's been multiple inspections on that site by the water district, by code compliance, by myself, PG&E. There, yes, there are utilities on Corvelli's parcel, originally on that parcel and extend into the Applings parcel. However, they are not unsafe. PG&E will not terminate service, which is another indication that it is not unsafe because if it was unsafe, they would terminate the service. At this point, the majority of the complaints that Corvelli's have brought to you today are civil in nature and need to be resolved through that means.
Thank you, Doug. Anyway, any other questions from the board? Seeing none? Okay, with that, there is, the agenda item is an action item upholding the denial of the appeal of the administration citation.
Madam Chair, I'll move this item to adopt the recommendation of the administrative hearing board denying the appeal of administrative citations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a motion and there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes on a five oh to uphold the denial of the appeal by the, of the administrative citation. With that, we'll move on to supervisor announcement. I will start to my left with Supervisor Callaway. Is there any comment?
Excuse me?
Okay. I think that is Jack. Jack, is that anything? Okay, thank you. Gage?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ben?
I'll, I'll hold it till after I have my meetings.
Okay, sounds good. Marita?
No.
You don't have anything? Okay. So with that, we are going to convene into closed session and we will report out at the next meeting. So with that, thank you everyone and have a good day.